Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 6th Regular City Council Meeting. It is six o'clock. That's our normal meeting time. And welcome again to all of you. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Hockes?
President.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Trotman?
Here.
And would you please rise, at least, yeah, Sorenkin of the Royal George Vineyard Church, to give us the invocation? Would you rise, please?
Well, Lord Jesus, we just come before you and we are so grateful for a safe weekend, a good weekend. Thank you for this community and just all they do to pull everything together. And, Lord, we, right now, just take a moment to invite you and acknowledge you. We ask for your wisdom. And we just pray that you would be with us, Lord. Thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would like to speak to council, we have sheets back here to be filled out. Would you please do that and bring it to Cindy, our city clerk, sitting here at the end? And if you have something that is going to be on the agenda, we would wait until we get to that portion of the agenda and then we'll have you come up and talk. So, any comments or announcements from council? Ms. Gonzalez?
Just wanted to put this out there. I was approached by a constituent who is looking to get together a group of individuals who are starting a disability advocacy...I'm sorry. Advocacy group. It's these braces? In Fremont County. So, if there's anybody who is interested, please contact me and I'll get you in touch with her. I think it'd be a great asset to have in our community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hockes?
I just want to say that I want to give kudos to everybody that was involved with the whole aspect for Blossom Weekend. There were so much people in this town. I hadn't seen...I've been here a long time. I hadn't seen that many people. There was people here and there, everywhere, you know, and everything went smoothly. Each event had the different locations. Those went good. And a lot of people, you can tell, had a good time. We had a good time in that. And the weather was cooperative. But everybody that had something to do was setting up all this stuff. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Ms. Turner?
I've got a couple things. One, I want to remind people that this week is National Correctional Workers Week. So, I don't think that made it onto our agenda, but we have so many correctional officers in our community and so I want to make sure everyone thanks them this week when they see them for keeping us all safe.
I might want to announce Saturday, too.
That's my next thing. So, on Saturday, all correctional workers in the community are invited to Centennial Park. We're going to have a cookout and activities for the kids and hopefully the weather will be as good as what we had this last weekend. People will come out and we can enjoy some relaxing time together. And then, other than going on Saturday evening, our history museum is hosting a historic bike tour, which I have signed up for. And I went on these last summer. They were so much fun. So, if you haven't already signed up, there's still room, I think. Lisa? No? Oh, gosh. Well, I will be sure to post on social media then and share it with everyone. Okay, very good. So, I'm hearing we'll have another one in June. But you definitely want to get in on those. They're a great way to learn more about the community.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anyone else?
I'm going to be doing the walking tours, where they do the bike tours. So, anybody who wants to do a walking tour comes.
Okay.
Very good. So, I'll announce so that people at home can hear, too. There's going to be a walking tour in addition to the bike tour. So, if you haven't made it into the bike tour, you can still come and walk and learn about our city. So, thank you for that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Smith?
I also would like to thank the citizens and all of those who participated on the Blossom Committee for the endless and countless hours they put into putting on the most fabulous event for our community. And it definitely was a good example of why we earned the Governor's Award. But on a city level, I'm really glad to see that Stephanie is in the audience today. She was the mastermind behind the city council's float that went down. It was beautiful.
It was great.
And not only was she the mastermind behind it, but she put to work a lot of other staff members. So, a lot of hands went into creating that float. And just want to thank everybody who made that possible.
Thank you, Stephanie. It was great. That's the first time I was ever in a parade. And the hat, I got to tell you, is hot. But it was very comfortable and it was about an hour. It was great fun. But, yeah, the streets are full of people. Anyone else?
I have a couple more announcements.
Sorry.
So, we also have general government meeting this Wednesday at four o'clock. We're going to be discussing the river development from First to Third Street. And so, I'm really looking forward to that discussion on Wednesday. I also have an announcement concerning our mobile shower unit. So, I really...Jim Johnson is in the audience today, too. And I also want to really tell Jim and George and Bob and Rex Brady, also Stacy Quiddick and Rochelle Ryder from DHS and the county commissioners, a thank you to them. We really spent a lot of hours together trying to make this mobile shower unit work in the program to get it together. And we were making a lot of really great progress and we were really excited about it, until it came back from our attorneys that because the mobile shower unit that we had found for $30,000 that our suburban could pull was not ADA accessible. And because it was not ADA accessible, that the city could not implement that, use that mobile shower unit. We went back to the company to see if it could be retrofitted so it could be available to all people. And it couldn't. We went and looked for other mobile shower units that would be ADA accessible. And it was going to be $60,000 for the unit. The suburban would no longer be able to pull it because it'd be too heavy. We'd have to buy a 1-ton truck. And then, the employee who would pull it would have to have a CDL license. And so, at that point, we were looking at $100,000 just for the capital investment to get the program started. And most of the communities that we researched, many of those communities who had this similar setup, by the way, which was an absolutely fantastic program, they said not only was it a great service for those who are experiencing homelessness, but it was a wonderful way to build trusting relationships, to bring them in, to get the services that they needed to get their life put back in order. And so, unfortunately, those communities who made those same investments, they serviced thousands of people experiencing homelessness, where our numbers are more to the 125 to 190 range. And so, we no longer felt that it was cost-effective to pursue that program. But I...so, I wanted to let you guys know that. I have let the homeless...the president of the Homeless Coalition, D.D. Clement, know. And...but I did also tell them that this is a good sign that we are willing and wanting to address some of the issues that we're experiencing with homelessness in our community. And we'll be seeing if there's other solutions that we can look at that would be more appropriate and cost-effective for our community. And another announcement that I heard today from the county, we have been looking to pursue opportunities for a regional stormwater district. We felt like this would be a responsible way to look at regional solutions to take care of our stormwater flooding. We've had many meetings. We've gone to the Stormwater Task Force with our community. That was their number-one recommendation. And they do not want to pursue that conversation any longer.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
I just want to follow up with you, Ashley. I just want to say thank you for putting everything that you did into trying to get that shower unit here. I know you worked tirelessly on trying to find a way to make sure that we could make a difference in that area. I'm sorry it didn't work out at this time, but that doesn't mean it won't in the future.
You know, usually, you know, something else will happen. I will say it was kind of interesting as city council members, I don't know about you, but sometimes, you know, you go out to the streets, you go to the bank or to the grocery store and you get pulled aside and yelled at for things that are happening in city council or in the city. In this instance, I would get people stopped and give me huge hugs over this. And so, I definitely got a sense that our community is sensitive to this subject matter and want to see something happen.
Great.
Well, what I appreciate about it most is that people are able to move forward from it, not just stay where they're at. So, thank you.
Great. Okay. This is something the mayor's been looking forward to for a long time. I get to read a proclamation for two of my...one of my favorite individuals and one of my...two of my favorite groups. Mr. Albright, would you step forward and bring Encore and Tiger Ladies in here, please? I am going to read the names. I'm going to have a proclamation and I'll read that. But this is so great. Our high school, of the many things that we have, that our high school has, this is one of the most exciting and wonderful group of people that we have. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation while we're getting all set up. And this is for...this is honoring Canyon City High School Encore State Championship. Whereas the hard work, dedication, talent, and leadership of 2019 Canyon City High School Encore...oh, is this Encore? This is Encore. All right. Has enabled these students to earn a state championship title. And whereas winning the 2019 state championship at the Colorado High School Activities Association State Choir Competition brought honor to Canyon City High School and the city of Canyon City on the local and state level. And whereas Canyon City High School choral director Todd Albright, team member, parents, faculty, and student body at Canyon City High School was integral in guiding the team to success through their unwavering support. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city of Canyon City to honor Canyon City High School Encore as state champions and to hereby declare Monday, May 6th, 2019, as Canyon City High School Encore Day. Come on. Thank you. All right. I am going to now read the names. Grace Baxter, Eric Bectell, Kalen Bame, Josh Sirney...did I say it right? I didn't. Faith Daly, Erica Dickens, Savannah Evans, Camry Gerhart, Sebastian Gibbs, Lucy Gruders, Sam Grossman, Aubrey Hayden, Morgan Hagie, Alyssa Howard, Sidney Hutchinson, Madison Kingery, Tyler Conti, Kaitlin Larson, Taylor Lee, Lakin McClure, Jaden Morgan, Rachel Murphy, Olivia Nordike, Joe Perez, Matt Perkins, Lauren Schoenbaum, Allison Shahorn, Scott Silverthorne, Kayden Smith, Kyle Smith...Kylie Smith. I'm sorry. Zachary Strickler, Lacey Tickleberg, Kalen Trainer, Peyton Valentine, and Michaela Werner. Congratulations and thank you all. I hope I didn't butcher your name too badly. Okay.
Can we do a picture?
Do you want to do a picture now? I've got another proclamation. I've got...so, all right. Let's do one for Tiger Ladies. Are the Tiger Ladies here? You just have...
Right in front of you.
Oh, there they are. You're too close and I can't see. So, thank you all again. And again, we're very proud of you. Honoring the Canyon City High School Tiger Ladies, third place at state competition. Whereas the hard work, dedication, talent, and leadership of 2019 Canyon City Tiger Ladies has enabled these students to place third in state championship. And whereas earning third place at the Colorado High School Activities Association State Choir Competition brought honor to Canyon City High School and the city of Canyon City on local and state level. Whereas Canyon City High School choral director Todd Albright, team members, parents, faculty, and student body at Canyon City High School were integral in guiding the team to success through their unwavering support. Now, whereas it be resolved by the city of Canyon City to honor Canyon City High School Tiger Ladies and to hereby declare Monday, May 6th, 2019, as Canyon City High School Tiger Ladies Day. Congratulations. I am going to read their names. I have it all here. Do I have it? Where did I put it? Oh, here they are. Here they are. Sorry. And the following people: Ty Adair, Kalen Andrus, Jordan Andrews, Alex Attencio, Talon Atwood, Annabelle Bender, Mackenzie Claflin, Emily Clark, Chloe Coulson, Reagan Cushman, Joanne Detheridge, Jordan Epperson, Haley Ewing, Elijah...did I not? What am I doing? Did I do the wrong thing?
Yeah.
It looks real suspicious when there were some male names in there. I don't know. I've got all kinds of paperwork here. I am so sorry. I have...we're going to find it. If not, we're going to take a picture. Just keep smiling. Okay. That's what I was doing. Jordan Epperson? Haley Ewing?
I think we need page five to six.
Page four. Todd, help me here. I wouldn't...
There's certificates of which two boys mixed in.
Oh.
It was Elijah and Tyler Phelps.
Okay. Okay. Well, those lucky guys. So, yes, I never would have qualified for either. Okay, Victoria Clover Glover, Alicia Goff, Anna Gonzalez, Jenny Green, Marley Hall, Katrina Jackson, Vivian Johnson, Emily Johnston, Kaylee Lincoln, Zoe Manchester, Kaylee Manning, Jackie Norby, Cassian Nova, Kami Podzinski, Bianca Pennington, Keely Predonovich, Reagan Ramirez, Megan Reynolds, Haley Ray Rossiter, Emma Rowe, Shay Schirato, Mateus Smith, Jade Thompson, Dakota Trahill, Victoria Walker, Carly Witherall, Priscilla Welch, Alia Elia Wood, Lillian Woodward. Did I get everybody?
I think so.
There's no Z's here? No more boys?
I think so. No more. There's those two.
All right. Wow. Well, congratulations. We're so proud of you, so proud of your school system. And now, we will come down and take a picture with you. How's that?
We'll stay up here.
We'll stay up here? Okay, I have been overruled. We'll stay up here. So, I messed everything else up.
Guys, can we get another global... Guys, go nail...guys, go nail it. Tiger ladies, can you give another row right over there? Gentlemen. Carrie, is that better?
Yeah. Okay, ready? Look right here, everybody. Okay, one more. Actually, one more. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Yes.
Would you care to address something for your young people here? Because there may be mayors and council people in this group. We don't know. So, go ahead.
I firmly believe that.
I do, too.
Is speaking to the mic?
Oh, boy.
He's a...oh, a microphone.
Testing. Okay. I firmly believe that we have incredible leaders right here every day that I get to work with. They're amazing kids. It doesn't feel like work most days. Sometimes, I don't even think about my paycheck associated with working with the kids. I just think I get paid an awful lot to go to meetings. So, I enjoy every day and they're great kids. So, and I enjoy the community support. It's been...I'm in my 30th year, so it's been a long time and I see former kids out here. It's just been a great time. So, thank you all so much and I love my kids.
Thank you, Todd. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. He didn't hear me. Is Mr. Walter and Mrs. Watson here?
Yeah, they are.
Could I?
I think they left.
Oh.
Mrs. Watson? Mrs. Watson? Are they? Mr. Walter? Excuse me. Yeah.
You see there?
I caught them.
They caught them both.
I did. Where's Mrs. Watson? Mr. Walter? They asked for you. Your turn. Here we go.
Oh, no. I don't like microphones.
Well, no, you don't really have to say a word. Just want to really thank you for all that you do for our young kids and old kids, I suppose. But just the pleasure we have going to your Encore and your dinners and everything else that you put on. It's a great experience. And I loved all that jazz. That was wonderful. So, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Now, if you looked at my desk up here, you'd think I'm not qualified to be here. I don't know where I'm at here. All right. Take me a few minutes to gather my thank you, John. I've got other proclamations. Is anyone here from the high school design and drafting excellence? Of course. I don't see Scott here. All right. We do have a proclamation for those talented individuals and we'll get that to the principal, I believe. Right? Okay. And what else do I have here? I have another proclamation. Oh, dear. Municipal Courts Week. It is Municipal Courts Week from May 5th to May 11th. And I will give that to Cindy. Would you like me...the 50th anniversary, by the way, of Municipal Courts Week. As you may or may not know, our clerk is a member of the municipal clerk group, Municipal Clerks Group, right? And that's where they get educated and they become really good clerks. So, proclamation and what else do I have? Can someone help me out here?
Yes. Historic.
I'd like to send...
Historic preservation and drinking water in the torchlight.
Okay. All right. Got Lisa and Ms. Lashaw? Right? No? Deana? That's right. I'm sorry, Deana. I'll lose my job here, you would hope. Come on down. National Historic Preservation Month, May 2019. Lisa and Deana were involved here. Whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation and for all Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas Canyon City has a very distinct and unequaled historic district and various historic landmarks. And whereas Canyon City has a vast network of dedicated residents, groups, and other organizations have prided themselves on the hard work and determination put forth in order to preserve our unique past for future generations. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has helped shape our community. Now, therefore, I, Preston Trautman, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, have the distinct honor of proclaiming May 2018 as National Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Canyon City to join their fellow residents across Colorado and the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Would you like to comment on that, either of you? Lisa?
We have over 14 different sites within Canyon City city limits that are on the national registry. We also have nine on the state registry and three sites that are listed on the local Fremont County registry. And we have the potential for many, many more. This is a program that has been around since the 1970s and it illustrates our pride in our community and our historic structures that represent our history. It's a program that's worth getting involved in. And we'll be doing a small little display within the Fremont County Administrative Building talking about how people can get their site listed on the national, state, or local registry this next month.
Deana? I think Lisa said it very lovely. I think the point is that these historic structures and districts really support economic development, sense of place and community. And once these structures are lost, they're gone forever. So, it's great that we have as many structures in our community that we do and, of course, our lovely district on Main Street.
Okay. Any questions of council? Okay. Thank you so very much. Is Bob Hartsman here? I have a proclamation here. It is the City of Canyon City Drinking Water Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2019. Whereas the health, safety, and well-being of all Coloradans are of utmost importance to the prosperity and livelihood of our state's families and communities. And whereas Colorado's streams, lakes, rivers, watersheds, and other clean water sources must be protected to maintain the good health of our citizens, wildlife, and fisheries. And whereas protecting Colorado's natural water supply and other natural resources is critical to the preservation of our environment for future generations of Coloradans. And whereas elected officials at each level of government, as well as businesses and citizens throughout our state, are responsible for ensuring that all Coloradans have access to clean drinking water. And whereas it is the duty of all Coloradans to serve our supply, preserve our supply of clean drinking water for future generations, and obey laws which protect Colorado's water supply for our use and for Colorado's diverse ecosystem. Now, therefore, it is resolved that May 5th through the 11th, 2019, hereby be designated as Water Drinking Water Week in the city of Canyon City. Mr. Hartsman, would you like to comment?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members, city staff, and all of our water customers out there. You know, it's a basic need, but many of us really don't take the time to think about it. We go to the kitchen sink and turn on the faucet and get water. Water that could be used for such tasks as cooking, bathing, washing clothes and dishes, flushing toilets, irrigating lawns and gardens. More importantly, water that's clean enough to drink. Most of us in the room can't really remember life any other way. Water is essential for every organ, cell, and tissue of our body. Water forms two-thirds of our body and it keeps the body's temperature normal, lubricates... Water forms two-thirds of our body and it keeps the body's temperature normal, lubricates the, and cushions the joints, and protects our spinal cord and sensitive tissues. Water is synonymous with life. As living beings, we cannot live without it. Yet, a lot of us don't really stop and think about where it comes from. In our case, it travels many miles to reach us, begins in the snowpack way up in the high Rocky Mountains. As the temperatures warm this time of year, that snowmelt begins to run off and begin its journey through miles of watersheds that are far away from our taps. It undergoes a miraculous process of capture, storage, and purification. So with that, the City of Canyon City Water Department invites city council and the citizens of our wonderful community to join us this week in commemorating 147 years of service to Canyon City's public health. As part of National Drinking Water Week, the City Water Department is recognizing the generations of Canyon City residents who ensured that our community had an ample supply of safe drinking water. When you stop and think about it, the need for a safe supply of drinking water to a community is priceless. We kicked off the National Drinking Water Week celebration by participating in this past weekend's Blossom Day festivities. We set up a couple water booths along the parade route to provide a fresh, cool, clean cup of water that we proudly produce here in Canyon City. What better way to prove what we as operators strive for as serving the best water in the state of Colorado? To make it official, this proclamation of national drinking water was presented to you tonight for all of our citizens' recognition. Clean water is essential to our lives and lifestyles and it impacts us every single We want to invite each and every one of you, as well as all of our citizens of our community that we serve, to join us at the Canyon City Water Treatment Plant at 103 Tunnel Drive on Friday, May 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for informative tours about the facility and to celebrate water. Tours will begin at the top of each hour. In closing, just want to let you know that the staff and I are grateful to you and our citizens for the support in the job that we do. Our, our staff takes their jobs very seriously and is proud of the water that they produce and distribute. We are honored to provide such a valuable service to the community that we live in. We hope to see you at the water treatment plant for a tour of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well done. Ms. Gonzalez? I think we have questions for you, Bob.
No, I don't have a question. I just, I have a statement. Not only is our water clean and safe, but it's some of the best tasting I've ever tasted. So, thank you for all the hard work that you put into it because...
Yeah.
Sometimes I just crave it. It's that delicious.
Well, I always tell people we're blessed with a wonderful source to begin with.
Yeah.
And then we've got a lot of great people behind the scenes, like I say, making sure that it's treated properly, distributed properly. They do a great job.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I guess I've been there two or three times and I'm amazed. I truly am, Bob, and you know that.
Yeah.
It's, it's clean, it's just amazing what they go through and what they do to get our water here. So really, I encourage all of you to go, to see them. We're quite proud of it. Thank you again, Bob. Thank you to your, your people that work with us.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Is Chief Harvey here? I am not double parked.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we have a request to postpone the, this next proclamation to the next meeting.
Okay. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We would like to get some of the other folks that actually helped organize the event to actually be here.
Okay.
So, if, if that's okay with council, we'd like to postpone.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't get my voice back then, huh?
We need to still read item A.
Item A.
We did. Oh, should I read it? Would you? She asked me if I maybe, she didn't... Cindy, what?
I think it's important that we recognize Cindy and her hard work on behalf of the citizens of Canyon City and our gratitude for her, for what she does.
All right. Here. What did you? You took it. All right. Okay. The 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks, Clerks Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2019. Whereas this office of the municipal clerk, a time-honor and virtual vital part of local government exists throughout the world. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office of municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas a municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, it be resolved that May the 5th through the 11th, 2019 is hereby designated as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Canyon City. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.[976.94][976.94][applause]
Should we get a picture with her?
I think that Carrie...
Carrie would like to have a picture. Okay. Group hugs. No.
Put Cindy right here.
Yeah, it could be right in the middle. Should it appear?
Yeah, I think so. You can have her logo right in the background.
I can hide behind the chair. Can't do that.
You need to be up front there.
I can. Yes, sir.
Come on.
I can hide just as well with them.
I blend right in.
Make it all function.
I think I'm gonna burp my head from the lights.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Well, I really butchered those names. Good grief. But those young boys that were lucky to be with the Tiger Ladies, anyway. Okay. Oh, there it is. Right here. We got through the proclamations. I think I started all over there.
No. You're right there. Okay.
Did you give me this? So we should maybe do this now?
Yeah, we skipped that.
Okay. Louisa Barton? Would you step forward? This is regarding the Lakeside Cemetery.
Hello.
Would you pull that microphone down a little closer to you so we can hear you?
Okay. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Each one of you has received one of these with the names of the children that were buried in a section that has not been on the map since the late 40s and early 50s. Thanks to the Colorado Correctional Industry Shop Department, they made crosses for all 25 of these. And we're gonna have a ribbon cutting on Sunday at 4:00 and I would like to invite everybody to come.
Where will it? It's at Lakeside.
Yes.
You'll have a tent or flags or...
Well, it's just south of the, the Three Flag Veterans Memorial. In fact, it's, up until tomorrow, it is just a blank spot. In fact, they had put the trash cans there, so we had to get them moved so they could put the crosses in.
Okay.
And the crosses that they made are, look like this.
Okay.
Right now, they just have white name tags on them. I am working to get them professionally engraved at a later date.
And these are the fallen correctional officers?
No, these are the fallen angels. They're babies from the ages of zero through eight.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. It says it right here.
And then, it's also, the names are included with the...
Okay. So, Sunday at 4:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for the consent agenda? All right. Could I ask our acting administrator, Ryan, to review the consent agenda, please?
Sure. Consent agenda, item 8A, awards bid number 2719 for a finished water storage tank to Riley Industrial Services, not to exceed $665,509. Item 8B, awards bid number 3519 for wayfinding signs and park identification to Graphic House Inc., not to exceed $36,425.40, includes a 10% contingency. 8C, awards number 3619 copier replacement to Gobins Inc., not to exceed $42,016. 8D, awards bid number 3719 to Magchloride Order to GMCO Corporation, not to exceed Item 8A, awards a bid for website redesign service to Civic Plus Inc., in the amount not to exceed $27,689. Do want to point out for that particular item, this was left on your desks at the dais today. That is an updated master service agreement, number 37 on that is the annual appropriations language that we're subject to by Colorado revised statute. See here. Item 8F, approved purchase order of coding inspection work of S&amp;S Coding Services, not to exceed $78,168. And 8G is your list of bills.
Are there any additions, corrections, or questions of our acting administrator? Mr. Meisner?
I've already had a brief discussion with Ryan. My question is in regards to the list of bills. We've got an expense in there for $7,045 or something like that to Actium. And I realize, of course, that that's a sole source issue, which comes into interpretation as to whether that should or should not go through some form of bid process. But then the other question that I have, which I assume requires some further clarification, it seems to me like the $7,000 exceeds the amount that should be spent without council approval.
And I, I am working with the finance director to make sure that we have the right controls in place to make sure that does not happen again.
Because I assume at this point that purchase has already been made, considering we're making a check.
Correct.
Mr. Meisner?
I assume there's some kind of calculation that's done, that the purchase of the four copiers, I assume that's an actual outright purchase versus some kind of a lease-rental agreement and that winds up being the most economical process for acquiring that technology?
Yeah. It's my understanding that this is the most economical option for the city.
That purchase price doesn't include any service. Is that correct? I would assume not.
I don't believe so, but I'd have to double-check that.
And then I got a question that maybe, is Adam still here?
Yes. He's back there.
There he is. He raised his hand. I just had a question in terms of the wayfinding, which he kind of answered, but the bid looked like that it had some variations for some different signs and one was painted and one wasn't. And you've said that the, the option that we chose was the best sign.
Right. So we included painted or corten steel. The price for corten steel is well within budget. It's a better option, so that's why we went with that. So the, the alternate would have been a painted sign, which would have been slightly cheaper, but wouldn't have, had the durability that the corten steel did.
Thank you.
Are we done? Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, Jim asked the first part of my question about the wayfinding signs on 8B. But as soon as these are awarded, how quickly can we get these signs produced and hung? That's my question. Getting your steps in today, Adam?
Yeah. I'm not sure, but I think we had 30 days on the contract.
Okay.
Yeah. It might be 45, but no longer than 45.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's for just two signs, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. The rest of the signs, the gateway signs will be coming soon and then the rest following that, so we should have everything under contract by end of the summer is our hope.
Okay. Good.
I'd have another question.
You just go ahead.
Yeah. Adam, do you know, are there any other permissions that we need from DOT or anything to install the signs?
Not these ones. These ones are going in the parks. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to do just a little recognition on E on the bid for the new website, especially for the mobile app. And I know that Jim, Councilmember Meisner, represented City Council on that committee of selection and that you did considerable reading and research on the topic and want to thank you for your time on doing that.
It was really, it was really a staff effort. I mean, staff are the ones that did all the homework and, and Dina and Christie.
Mm-hmm.
We had a variety of bids and it was really challenge, to challenge to figure out what was in the best interest of the city.
So, thanks to everyone on that committee then. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Any additions and corrections? Any more? I'd ask then for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
And the regular agenda.
What am I missing?
And the regular agenda.
And the regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
Oh, the regular agenda. On the regular agenda.
Well...
Amended agenda. They're both the same.
Jim, Mr. Meisner, were you going to ask to have some item pulled off or not?
Not on this one.
Not on this one?
Well...
No, that was on the 10 through 12. Items 10 through 12.
I didn't get any response back from my email request on item number B, so I just think we go to, we get item number, not B, but item number nine. And we get to item number nine. If, if it doesn't suffice council, we can always delay that.
Okay. Thank you. Are your motions been made? Do I have a second? Ms. Turner?
I actually just have a, there's a small typo on number 16. It says Resolution 4, but Cindy's telling me it should say 14.
Where?
It's on, yeah, it's on number six on 16 on the revised agenda.
Oh.
Okay. So, Ms. Gonzalez, you made the motion. Will you amend that motion to include the correction? Resolution 14, not 4?
14 dash 4?
It's, I, it's number 14 is the last, it's consideration adoption of resolution. It should be 14 instead of 4.
Oh, yes. Okay. So, consideration and adoption of number 16, resolution should read 14. and that you did considerable reading and research on the topic, and I want to thank you for your time on doing that.
It was really, it was really a staff effort. I mean, staff are the ones that did all the homework, and Dina and Christie. We had a variety of bids, and it was really challenge, to challenge to figure out what was in the best interest of the city.
So thanks to everyone on that committee then, yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Any additions and corrections, any more? I'd ask then for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda. What am I missing?
And the regular agenda.
And the regular agenda.
Oh, the regular agenda, on the regular agenda.
Well...
Amended agenda. They're both the same.
Jim, Mr. Meisner, were you going to ask to have some item pulled off, or not?
Not on this one.
Not on this one?
Well...
No, that was on the 10 through 12. Items 10 through 12.
I didn't get any response back from my email request on item number B, so I just think we go to, we get item number, not B, but item number nine, and we get to item number nine. If it doesn't suffice council, we can always delay that.
Okay, thank you. Are your motions been made? Do I have a second? Ms. Turner?
I actually just have a, there's a small typo on number 16. It says Resolution 4, but Cindy's telling me it should say 14.
Where?
It's on, yeah, it's on number six on 16 on the revised agenda.
Oh.
Okay. So, Ms. Gonzalez, you made the motion. Will you amend that motion to include the correction? Resolution 14, not 4?
14 dash 4?
It's, I, it's number 14, it's the last, it's consideration adoption of resolution. It should be 14 instead of 4.
Oh, yes, okay, so consideration and adoption of number 16, resolution should read 14.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, second. Any questions on a motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, I'd like to ask council if we could... I see the Smiths sitting in the audience here. If we can move them forward and get the second reading out of here? Or should we continue on with the... Or can I... Go on with the regular agenda? What?
I think we've just adopted the agenda.
You're right, okay. I missed it. All right. I tried. Okay. We're going to then, that end the consent agenda. We're going to talk, and number eight will be structural calculations requirements for 2016 IBC. Who's going to carry that? Adam? Anybody?
I think that'll be me.
That'll be you? Mr. Ryan Stevens?
All right, so structural calculation's been a requirement of the Building Department for 30 years. Below is a list of code requirements that can be reviewed by council to create an ordinance to exempt structural calculations during the review process. These are all related to the International Building Code 2006, Section 1604, general design requirements. Number one is a one-story conventional light frame construction per Section 2308 of the code. Wood pole barns not to exceed 4,500 square feet and no taller than 12 feet. And then number three would be S1 and S2 storage unit buildings of 10,000 square feet or less. So, from the Building Department, the recommendation would be to approve recommendations and move forward with creating an ordinance to exempt those building, or to exempt those examples from structural calculations as per the IBC 2006.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
Who we asking?
Yeah.
Is there staff, or are we doing that with you?
You can ask, you can ask me, and we will try and answer it as best we can, or this might be an item where we have to bring it back to you.
Well, regarding item 3, S1 and S2 storage, which I have no idea the differences or what those designations are for, but I'm curious as to why there's the limitation of 10,000 square feet? Or is that a limitation of like S1, S2?
That will be something I'll have to get an answer back to, because I don't know that offhand.
Mr. Meisner?
My second question is, is the last statement of the second paragraph on page, I guess two, it says that the storage unit buildings must be designed by a Colorado-registered professional engineer. And this is because of my ignorance. If I buy a storage unit from Chicago that was engineered by an engineer in Chicago, is he also registered in Colorado? Or do I have to get another engineer to verify those?
It's my understanding that they would have to register within Colorado.
Mr. Ham...
I believe, I believe that these are for rent. So these are storage units for rent? Right, right. So I mean, I'm saying if I buy the buildings from a...
Right, and it's assembled onsite?
If it's designed and built in Chicago, I assume that engineer could be from Illinois. So I wouldn't be able to do it without getting a Colorado engineer to verify that. Is that in fact what you're asking?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
And that would be no different than any other plans in Colorado that are stamped by a registered professional engineer. So you can't, under state law, in order to stamp plans in Colorado, you need to be a Colorado reg... So that's what this, that's all this does. This is just restating Colorado law as it relates to these types of units if they were exempt from the structural calculations.
Ms. Turner?
I appreciate Mr. Stevens' willingness to try to answer our questions, but honestly, I'd like to hear from Kathy on this, because it's all Greek to me, and I think her expertise and explanation would be helpful to council. I know I would find it helpful.
I would too. Ms. Smith? Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my comments would just reflect Councilmember Turner's. I think that they just want a direction on moving, you know, if they should move forward. I think my direction would be, let's put this to a general government meeting where we can learn more. Kathy can report to us the process, what goes into this, and then that would be appropriate time for us to get a little bit more education and make a better decision.
Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just point out that on the issue of the pole barns, we were provided a Colorado chapter of international code council, a building guide for pole barns. And in there, they say, if you're within these parameters, you do not need to have it, the seal of a registered professional engineer on the drawings, that you can essentially do the drawings yourself. And so I would, but there is a technical specification that says, as long as the jurisdictional requirements and barn location do not exceed the pole barn guides of 30 pounds per square foot of snow load, live load, or 90 miles per hour design parameters for wind. And so if we're to approve the requirement for a professional engineer to chop the request, I'd like to know that we, that we fall within that, you know, within that exemption. Otherwise, I would recommend that we do not unnecessarily require a structural engineer stamp on a cookie cutter pole barn.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
And I just wanted to further point out that this was brought to us in reaction to a business person who wanted to construct a pole barn, and is coming up with a lot of, I guess, added paperwork and requirements that was an inhibition to him running an efficient business plan. And so this is a reaction to try to become more business-friendly and cut out a little bit of bureaucracy. I will report, though, that this particular business has moved on their plans away from a pole barn from right, for right now, and is exploring other options that'll be a little bit more quicker to the today's standards that we have.
Okay, I would like to take Ms. Turner's lead and ask if we don't bring this to a general government meeting where we can have our billing official there to answer the question. Is that okay with everybody?
I agree.
Or we could, is that right? All right, let's move on.
We'll do.
What? Thank you. Aquatic Center financial feasibility comments from our acting administrator.
All right, so as the community citizen group moves forward with, you know, looking at trying to establish a rec center and aquatic center, we felt it was important to have a discussion about financial feasibility from the city's perspective, and not necessarily in particular to any of the models or buildings that were put forward, but from a realistic standpoint of what the sales tax increases might actually mean to the city as a whole. So we've got the examples here from the feasibility study, A, B, and C. Those are the same options that have been presented previously. Aquatics with some fitness, aquatics and fitness. And then option C is aquatics and fitness, as well as gym, Golden Age Center, and meeting rooms. You'll see the capital costs ranging from 25.2 million to 43.1 million, and those debt service costs ranging from 1.9 million up to 3.3 million for the, for option C. When looking at the capital financing, you know, more than likely, it would probably come to some type of sales tax vote. A 1% sales tax increase would generate $3.5 million in revenue, and you could potentially cover option C. But when you look at the sales tax as a whole, that would bump us from 8.4% up to 9.4%. And that's the seventh highest sales tax rate in the state, and it's actually above Aspen, which is at 9.3%. Option two, if you look at a half percent sales tax increase, that would generate approximately 1.7 million annually. It would increase our sales tax total to 8.9%. That's the 16th highest in the state. That's in line with Blackhawk, Central City, and Eagle, just to give some comparison. And the other option would be a third cent sales tax increase, which generates about 1.1 million annually, and that would put us at 8.73%. 27th highest in the state, in line with Manchu Springs. The other side of this equation is the operating costs. And we've looked at operating costs in the feasibility study as potential mill levy. I think from, for the purposes of this discussion, it hasn't been identified if that's going to be a city mill levy or a rec district mill levy. I think the citizen group probably needs to do some more work to decide what the best option is there. But we do have options A, B, and C, again, in order to cover those operating expenses, both with an increase in city mills or the rec district mills. At this point, what we're looking for from council is some direction on what kind of financial envelope we should be discussing with the citizen group and give them some realistic ideas on how they should move forward from a financing standpoint as they go about their business and working to make this thing become a reality.
Questions of council? Oh, thank you, volunteer. Ms. Smith?
I have been working with the citizens group, and there's several representatives here in the audience, and like to welcome them to make comments if they want to. But I've been to many of the meetings, and so I just thought, I'd add some further explanation. As they are, we are trying to empower the citizens group to come up with a plan to present to voters in 2020. We want to make sure that as they go forward with their planning, that it's within a realm or a budget that we feel comfortable supporting and getting behind them with. And it, I know in some meetings, it was some comments where we, well, I just, you know, if I'm going to work hard to go to the ballot, let's go big or go home. And I think we, as city council members, have a responsibility to think about the financial implications of what we ask our citizens. And as much as I want to have a recreation community center, I also want to make sure that it is responsible request to our taxpayers, and it's something that we can afford and maintain. Just some further feed, or food for thought, I guess. Grand Junction just had an election recently. I think they had asked somewhere in the realm of like a .3-something sales tax for a recreation center. And their citizens, or their survey that they did showed really strong support for this, and it just failed. But their sales tax right now is at 7.65, considerably lower than Canyon City's. Montrose is one of our examples that we have been using of an ideal recreation center that we would like. When they went to the voters, they passed a .3% sales tax for, with the 25-year sunset, and that brought their sales tax today to 7.95, which is still lower than Canyon City's sales tax. And they did not ask for a mill levy increase, the recreation district. They budgeted within their current budget to pay for that long-term maintenance. And also, their projected overhead was going to be almost self-sustaining at about 85%. And today, I believe they are completely self-sustained, which is really unique. Most recreation centers do not pay for themselves. And our market study has shown that our, the projections that they show, number one, we are borderline in being able to afford a record center to begin with, but even to maintain it with conservative numbers granted, we're looking at just over 50% self-sufficiency. And so we need to be really sensitive to the financial implications to our community as we look forward to a plan to get an indoor pool and recreation center in Canyon City.
Ms. Haquez?
My feeling on this here is, we still haven't even, which would make it easier for me to look at what we're looking at, what we want to do. We still haven't found a location to put this swimming aquatic center, whether we do the small one or the big one. And so there's a land purchase that's going to have to take effect and everything else. So I think until we actually have a location for this, where it will go, to me is the most important part, because the location is going to determine how big of a center we can accommodate, whether we can accommodate the full-fledged one that people would like to see, or the middle one or the other one. So the land acquisition, to me, is the most important part right now. So that we can say, okay, this is where it's going to go. Now, because we had the kind of the same problem way back when, when we was looking for a new library. And then we was looking around different spots where to put it and everything else, and that became a real stumbling block. In fact, that's why there was never a new library built because of that. So let's get the land location first, and then we can give that to the group that's working on it to look at what we can do or can't do.
So Councilmember Haquez, we have determined that through the market study and considerable research too by our committee here, that the Abbey is the ideal location for it. We are reaching out to the Abbey to see if there's possibility to purchase that land upfront, so then when we go to the voters, it could be more shovel-ready project.
And I understand that.
But also the acquisition of land, we also need to know the costs that we're dealing with and what we can afford.
And I understand that, actually, but the thing about it is, it's a place they're looking at. It's nothing that's, it's set in stone. And until you get something set in stone, it's very difficult to continue going with something. It's no different than when you decide you're going to build a home. You pick the spot where you want your home built, and then you get it done. So let's get the spot, make sure it's available, make sure it can be purchased or leased or whatever the case may be, and then we can work on the other details. I don't think we should go ahead of the, of the plan before we know where it's going to go.
Ms. Cochran?
So I've had conversations with people that live in West, or excuse me, East Canyon, and even in Pueblo, and they already are driving out to Pueblo West for their shopping because the sales tax is lower out there, and they're on fixed incomes. I think it would be inappropriate to raise our sales tax more than a third of a percent, because at that point, I don't think we're being business-friendly. Our local businesses struggle enough as it is, and if we have a sales tax that high, I can pretty much guarantee that people will shop elsewhere. So those are my feelings on it.
Okay. Mr. Horn? Oh, excuse me, just hold that thought. Dolly, Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, with that thought in mind about raising sales tax, and I guess, Kyle, you could answer these questions too, but what, what kind of grants and... What's been explored as far as grants go and...
I didn't mean to pick on you, Kyle, or there's other gentleman here that, would you rather turn it over to them? I can do that, you know?
That's, that's fine, I can answer a week, or one of them could come up as well.
I figured you could, so...
I could always have a partner in crime, I'm fine with that.
The chief's here, why do you say that?
The chief's here, there we go. So we're all set.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Dolly, I didn't mean to cut you off, are you...
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
I, I, as far as grants go, there are multiple options. But keep in mind, they all come, of course, with matching, things like that. And obviously, if a rec center passes, that operates as a very good match. Significantly, when you look at, Montrose was able to use some match, Estes Park used some grant information for match, Rifle just did an outdoor pool, and they use that as a match as well. So if you're using GOCO, Great Outdoors Colorado, it has to be an outdoor project. So it'd have to be something related outdoors. So it'd have to be something like maybe an indoor slash outdoor pool, or it'd have to be a playground that goes on outside, or additional fields, or things like that. You'd have to use something outdoor. Dole is another option. In the past, they have supported recreation centers, and it's for infrastructure. But at the same time, those may not be available at this time. Right now, their focus is not on recreation centers. They're having other focuses. That doesn't mean they haven't done them in the past, they have. Just means right now, they're not looking at it. Could that change next year? Absolutely. Could that change later this year? Who knows? The Dole board can decide how they want that money to be used. But you're looking at a limit, again, of, can't remember if it's one or two million. It's, it's, but it'd be something for infrastructure. So bringing in water, sewer, streets, things along those lines to pay for your off-site costs. Are there grants with people like Gates Foundation or Daniel's Fund? Yes, there are those options. But those are... But those are, they're going to be looking for maybe something dealing with a youth activity. So it would go for, okay, we'll pay for some basketballs, volleyballs, maybe some play equipment within the pool, some backboards, some volleyball standards, things like that that actually go to those activities. So there are grant opportunities, and Montrose did a wonderful job of leveraging grants to increase their building. So we would have those options. But the reason they were able to get those grants was because the community came together, worked together, passed it, and then they were able to leverage that to get additional grants. And that did leverage them for a few extra million dollars. So is that something we could do here? Yes. But the idea that some people have that a grant could fund the lion's share of this project, fifty percent, sixty percent, seventy percent, that's just not happening. Those grants don't exist. You have to come up with other ways. Are there business sponsorship opportunities? Yes, Woodland Park is a fine example of that with their aquatics and over three million dollars raised through private donations. Then they bonded out the rest of it. It was over a ten million dollar bond. So there are options, and the only question is how we want to do it. That's why the citizens committee is working to look at all those options and to see what we could maybe afford. And then the question is, how can, for example, the city, the county, and the rec district work together to then leverage that, leverage those options to try to get grants? You also can get grants contingent on an election passing. If it doesn't pass, you don't get the grant. It's just that simple. But if it does pass, then it's awarded to you. So you have options. The only question is how, how we want to move forward, how you want to deal with it. But don't be fooled, the lion's share is still going to have to come from the citizens in our community or communities, depending upon how the tax question, tax question is asked. We've had lots of ideas floated around, but could there be a city-county-rec-district combination? Yes. That's within the realm of possibility. Will it happen? I don't know. But there are plenty of options out there.
Okay. Mr. Hammack? Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you, Kyle. I do have a question for you. I saw in the media, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, that Pueblo West just had recently purchased property somewhere north of Walmart, if I understood what they were saying correctly, for a aquatic recreation center. Do you have any information or facts about that?
The one that I know in Pueblo West by Walmart is actually Soccer House. Is that the one you're referring to?
This was a purchase of property to build a new center.
I, I can honestly say I'm not familiar with that. The one in Pueblo West that I'm most familiar with is Soccer House. There's a big article in the Pueblo Chieftain about that, and that is a private business coming down with soccer fields, all indoor, bar, restaurants, some volleyball courts, basketball courts, things like that. So it's a big entertainment center. But I don't, I'm not familiar with the Pueblo West Metro District going forward with that. They may be, but I'm just not familiar with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Horn. All right.
Hey, you got one over there.
Ms. Turner, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of these options that we're considering tonight, is there one that the rec district is in favor of more than another?
The options on the building size or tax question or what?
The tax question. What's been presented to council now is kind of the direction we want to go and how much tax we should consider putting on a ballot.
I, you know, in, there are two ways of thought here. One, you're setting the parameters for what you want the citizens committee to work with. Hey, this is where you're at, citizens committee. What, what can you do to fit within this budget? Okay, so that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, are we putting the cart before the horse? Is the best option to actually come up with visuals, with a plan, present it, what it could look like, the size of the building, maybe something to give a visual, and then be able to tell the citizens, hey, this is what it is. We're not asking for a blank check. Hey, look, we're going to get point three or point five sales tax and this is, and make it work. To some, they may say that would be a, not a blank check, but at least an open check for the time being. So there are two schools of thought there. How you, how you guys want to handle it, that's, that's up to you. Your city council, you get to make that decision. That's not the rec district's decision, that's not our board's decision, that's not mine. That's yours. But there are two schools of thought in how you want to move forward. So my thought is, talk with the citizens group, see what they think, get their opinions on it, and see if, you know, do you want to work a few options and then present this and then say, okay, we can get behind this? Or do you want to say, you know what, we don't like the options that you've come up with, we can't get behind this? And it kind of makes this conversation moot. So the only question is what you want to do as a city council, and that's, that's what you're elected to do. So you guys get to make that decision.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
He actually answered, he actually answered my question as he kept talking, so.
Okay. This, Mr. Meisner. Mr. Meisner?
So what is the next step there, Mr. Horn, from your group?
What's the next step?
I mean, what are you guys going to do? I mean, let's make the assumption that we say we're going to do option number three in terms of third percent sales tax, then what are you going to do? What do you guys?
Well, here's the thing, you've been presented with three options. What if the option that the citizens committee works through and through surveys and studies that we find, not one of the three options or the option that we go with? What if it's an option that's not on the board right now? These options were for part of the feasibility study. This isn't set in stone. This isn't, this was for the purposes of the feasibility study. What happens if it says, no, we're, what we need to serve the community, we did surveys, we did all this information, all the government entities are on board, the citizens committee, and we say it's about a fifty thousand square foot facility, which by the way, is not on the board. It's going to cost twenty-nine million dollars. What if we get behind that and say that is the option? I don't think anything has been decided that it has to be A, B, or C right now. This was for the purposes of the study. But now that the study is done, and we know that it is borderline, it's up to the citizens group and the rec district's opinion to go back and look at those options and see what fits best. And then, of course, they can make a recommendation, surveys can happen, Ryan Stevens and I have even talked about that, our board, your city council's talked about that. When then do we send out surveys? When do we get information from people to see what they're going to get behind? There are a lot of questions to ask still, too many questions to answer tonight. We could be here for another two hours discussing all these options. Ryan and I had a three-hour meeting just for us to get on the same page. That, that may not happen tonight. Let the people work the issue, let them come up with something, and then say, hey, so we did the feasibility study, here's A, B, and C, but these are the options, these are D and E that we think could work. What can you get behind city council? What can you get behind rec district? What can you get behind Fremont County? Then I think you make your decision. I think that is where the rec district is at. We want to see what they come up with and then go from there. Are we behind looking at a mill levy increase? It's something that we're looking at. Is there something that we've made an official motion or had a ton of discussions on? No. We haven't even discussed what that mill levy would look like. Are we entertaining the option of a mill levy increase for operations? Yes, we are. We flat out are. But is that something that we've voted on, that our board has discussed? No. We want to see what the citizens come up with. Now the question is, what can we get behind? What can we support them with? How can we support them to better serve the public and the community? That's where we're at.
I'd like to get to a conclusion here. Ms. Smith?
I guess my recommendation is, number one, we are not setting anything in stone tonight. Nothing is in granite. It's more just a conversation with the rec district and with the citizens committee to make sure that we are all kind of moving forward in the general same direction for the betterment of the community. My mind, I am open to plans D and E, but I also, while that committee is dreaming and planning and putting tons of work into this issue, want them to know kind of where some boundaries or where council, council is most likely to be in favor of supporting. And so at least like to have a little bit of that.
I can think Daniel from the citizens committee could probably answer some of those questions on where they're at. But I don't think anybody's sitting here going, let's just shoot for the moon and let's make a sixty million dollar project. I think that they are looking at boundaries. But from a citizens committee point of view, Daniel would be perfect to talk about where they believe they're at. He's been involved from the get-go. And in all reality, we're just trying to work with them. We're not trying to lead them, we're not trying to guide them, we're just trying to work with them to make something happen. And he would be the one that could answer those questions.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. I would just, if we're looking for those boundaries, I would second Ms. Cochran's comments that a point three-three is probably, that might even be tough.
Okay. I would rather, let's do this at a vision committee. We don't need to be doing this at a general, at a regular city council meeting. We get to meet twice a month, two to three hours. These discussions can go on for a long time. So let's schedule maybe for a vision committee. You can have the whole committee. I don't know where we're going with this.
Well, I think that the citizens committee has a lot more work to do before they come to vision committee, but I think maybe tonight in our discussion, at least they kind of know where council, where council members' comfort level is in the financial realm. And that we're open to discussion, we're open to vision, we're open to planning, just, just make sure that this discussion tonight is a part of your discussion too, as you go back to the citizens committee and go forth in coming up with the best product for us. So two have said they feel comfortable with point three-three. I, that's kind of, maybe can just go around and see where we're at.
All right, wait, I have Ms. Turner. I have Ms. Turner. Go ahead.
We can just start down there and I'll, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Until I know where the, the place is going to be built or potentially be built, I don't, I don't care for any of these right now, okay? The land location to me is the key element.
I'm in favor of a rec center. I think it's, it would be fantastic for our community. I've been saying that for a long time. I just also know how hard it is to get any kind of tax passed. So I know that grants are difficult to come by, but I would sure like to see some grants written and applied for and denied at least, to say that you tried that route before we go and ask taxpayers for more money.
Ms. Cochran?
I've already spoken my piece.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
I think ideally it would be point three-three, but like I said, my mind's open to see what options they present us.
Okay, Mr. Hammack?
I've spoken my piece too. Thanks.
Mr. Meisner?
Good luck on thirty-three percent, or third percent. You know, we got stormwater, we got a massive issue with, that needs to be a third of a percent. So do you do a third percent for stormwater or do you a third percent for a rec center? And I realize they're both vital to the community. Do you add both of them or you're three-quarters of a cent almost?
Ms. Turner?
We need more information.
Ms. Turner?
Like Councilwoman Gonzalez, I'm also hoping that we get a rec center. I would love to see one here. But I really don't, you know, Mr. Horn was saying it's council's decision to decide which direction we want to go, and it's really not. It's the citizens' decision. So I could sit up here and say, oh, I'm, I'm fine with a half percent sales increase, but that doesn't mean anything if it doesn't get voter support. So at this point, I think it's, we're just way too premature to even be giving an opinion on what we think we want to do about funding because there, there isn't a plan in place yet for what we'd even be asking the voters to vote on. So while I'm in favor of it, I just don't think we have enough information at this point to give direction or make a decision.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor too. I do think that we should have that discussion at a vision committee or general government, and let's get down to it. It's going to be tough to get another tax in this town, especially since people got their notice evaluation on their homes. And I'm all for it, the rec center would love to have it, will back it, but I just feel like we need to have more discussion, bring it to, let's sit down, have a vision committee, we can spend a couple hours on it and try and go forward. Okay?
All right, well, good luck with your planning. We look forward to seeing what you guys come up with. I know there's a lot of go-getters out there ready to hit the ground running and providing a plan that you guys want to see. So thank you, thank you for all your time.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to ten. It's a consideration adoption by title only of Resolution twelve, Series two thousand nineteen, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving and Revising General Conditions and Requirements Document zero-zero-seven-one-zero of the city's construction standards." Could I have Acting City Administrator report?
It's actually eleven.
It's eleven.
It's eleven. Well, this has changed so many times.
And we'll bring Adam up to speak to this one.
Okay. It's eleven.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As you know, we're making a significant investment with our roads with the reconstruction for the two-way projects. And we have in our existing standards a moratorium on cutting those new streets, realizing that, of course, they do get cut based on emergencies or new development. And if they do get cut, we have, we currently have two alternates for restoration. And those special standards are to further protect the road, even though it's getting cut, and make the impact as little as possible when that does happen. And what we've found is one of those alternates over the last decade or so does not work very well. One of the reasons is there's no known local contractors that do that type of work. It's fairly specialized, and because of that, we end up waiting months sometimes for repairs to be made, allowing further damage or public opinion to decline during that time that we're waiting for a repair. And then also, we found that when they do come, oftentimes it's not being done properly and it's being done ineffectively. And so what we'd like to do with this resolution is remove that alternate from the standard and just allow the one standard, which is basically they would mill the asphalt and replace the surface, to eliminate the seam where the pavement was cut and to smooth out the road where it was cut. Just where the, like I said, the infrared heating is just not working out.
Any questions, council? Ms. Gonzalez?
So to take this out completely would mean that nobody could ever do this again in our, on our streets.
No. So we're leaving the infrared standard in our specification, so it's a tool that could still be used, it just can't be used for repairing our brand-new roads.
Brand-new roads?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm also the, under the impression that milling is a more expensive procedure?
Well, initially it was. When we, that's one of the reasons we wanted alternates in there in the very beginning is we wanted to have options. And, and some of that was because of cost. And it's a bit of a toss-up now because, again, no one has the equipment. Two, three years ago, when Kiwitt did some work here in town, they actually had to go and buy their own equipment because they couldn't find anybody to do it. Where milling is more common, we just had our asphalt in Centennial Park milled last week and then replaced within the same week. So, you know, it's, it could be, it could come down to cost, but what we're seeing is, even if it is a little cheaper, it's not working. And so we're, we're suffering the consequences of that based on allowing something that's possibly a little cheaper for a contractor to do.
Okay. And then, my question is about the fifteen feet?
Right.
Cutting out fifteen feet? If it's just a pipe or?
So they're just milling an extra fifteen feet. And again, I don't know if you're familiar, if you've seen some of that work on, especially when they do work on the state highways, they will mill a little extra distance beyond where the work is, and that's the feather that, that disturbance out.
So does that mean, from, from the point that they're cut, fifteen feet this way, fifteen feet this way? So we're talking thirty feet?
Thirty feet either, either way, right.
And what were the specifications before that?
The same.
Okay.
So that, that, we're not changing that specification at all, no.
Okay.
Mr. Meisner?
I'd send a request to Ryan, but I know he's busy. How much consultation do we have with any contractors on this proposed change?
I haven't consulted with any contractors on this proposed change. We have had three cuts on our brand-new roads in the past year. You're welcome to go drive them, they're problematic already. One of them's been disturbed for some time. Now, that one's on Main Street at Sixth. So again, we're starting to, a good thing is development's starting to pick up and that, but the problem with that is we see the impact. that, but the problem with that is we see the impact, because again, our focus with 2A was to do those larger streets that are, that are in those areas, that are primed for development, but because of the development that needs to happen, you know, that's where the cuts are being made.
So the cuts, the three cuts that you're making reference to, those on, those are on 2A's reconstructed streets?
One is on Main Street, and the other two currently are on East Main.
And those were done with infrared?
Uh, yes.
And those have failed? Or you anticipate those failing?
They have failed, they weren't done properly. So now, so for example, the one on Main Street, we're looking at a disturb, another disturbance to do it correctly. And so again, it's just, it's a, it's a public image thing, it's a further destruction to the road in the meantime.
Would this, is this first reading of this ordinance, is that correct?
It's actually a resolution, so these are standard specifications, they're not in the code. These are specifications we develop, and then usually get your guys' acknowledgement of those specifications by resolution.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Well, was it Kiwitt? Okay, was it, when we did the repairs on East Main and Sixth and Main, was it Kiwitt that did those?
No.
Okay, so it was a separate company?
Yeah.
And is there some kind of warranty that comes along with that?
There is again, but that's just problematic. If something, if we don't have faith in something that's going to work anyway, and then you're, you're collecting bonds for work, and then, then it's that much more difficult to collect on those bonds within two years, we'd rather just have the repair made and not touch it again.
Okay. And then my second question is, so none of our local contractors have an infrared machine. Do they have a milling machine? Do any of our local contractors have milling machines?
No, but milling machines are easier to obtain or find contractors to do that work.
Easier, but more expensive?
Possibly, yes.
I think I'd like to consult some contractors, like Jim had mentioned, before we move forward on this, just because it sounds like it could be very costly to our community.
Mr. Meisner, wait, all right, Mr. Meisner.
Now, quickly, this, we're talking about Item E, Special Restoration Standards?
Yes.
But you had kind of mentioned that this would apply only to that, that five, is a five-year period we've got on a new construction?
Five for brand-new roads, two years for a new overlay.
So is that where this, this particular...
That's the only place this applies.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have, someone wanted to do a patch on a road that was older than five years and use an infrared, they could do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just cut it out, fill it.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions of Council? Then I'm going to entertain a motion in second.
I think I understand it better than what I did when I read it.
Well, I was asking for a motion, is that a motion?
So, well, I'm explaining my change in position. Mayor Council, I move that we approve Resolution 12, Series of 2019, second.
Motion's made in seconded. Any questions on a motion?
I mean, if we wanted to talk to some contractors, what kind, I mean, is this something you guys are needing an answer on right now? Is it time-sensitive, or...
It's time-sensitive, in my opinion, just because the cuts are being made, the work's being made, but, I mean, it's, it is what it is.
Any questions on the motion? Any other?
We have a discussion.
That's what this time is for. We've had, please, Mr. Meisner.
My position changes the fact that we've got two alternatives, and our city engineer is telling us Alternative 2 isn't working, so we're just left with Alternative 1. That's what I'm taking from this.
I'm seeing the same thing. If the second alternative is not working, and it's not repairing our road, I'm not sure there's any value in keeping it as an option.
Any other discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, are we going to...
Thanks, Adam.
Is that 12? My number's been changed so many times.
That was 11, this is...
Yeah, 12, you're right, Mayor.
I know my numbers, I just was seeking some guidance here. All right, it's been changed so many times. Number 12, consideration of municipal code update, Ordinance Number 13, Series 2019, for first reading, introduction by title only, entitled, "An Ordinance for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Authorizing the Sale of the City of City Property Located Within the River Station Subdivision Exemption Canyon City, Colorado." Mr. Acting Administrator, would you like to report?
The Royal Gorge Route Railroad has agreed to purchase the Santa Fe Depot site, defined as Lot 1 in your packets, for $755,000. The sale does not include Lot 2, which is the Centennial Park parking lot, the raft takeout, or the riverbank. Sale of this property to the current leaseholder will allow the railroad to make improvements to the property, to enhance the guest experience, and improve economic development and tourism for the area.
Any questions of Council?
Ryan, what does the train plan to do with the property if it's acquired?
Pardon me. They are planning on improving and expanding the gift area. I believe they also have some plans to improve some of the restroom facilities. And then further out, you know, they've had several different ideas out there, but I don't know that they've finalized any of those ideas, those have been fluid with some of the other purchases they've been making.
Is some of their conversation involving creating more parking for their business?
Not that, I've, not discussions that I've been part of.
And I do want to point out that we are not selling the part of the property that is by the river, or the rafting taken and takeout, that is remaining open to the...
Correct.
...public, or ownership under the city. And also, the city has been purchasing some property along the riverfront. In our citizen survey for 2018, we did ask the citizens if they support acquiring property adjacent to the Arkansas River for access, parking, retail restaurants, and residential, and there was 73% to 77% support for that. And I believe one of the intentions is from the sale of this, not only can the train, who has been very successful and growing in their business, they need to expand the train depot, but we also need to be able to redevelop a little bit of that land along the river, so that it can be more desirable to developers to come in, and maybe have some incentive for them to come in, and maybe build some restaurants along the river, or a boutique hotel, or something along those lines. And so this is a way to finance some of that, potentially.
Ms. Cochran.
So I know we had been working to get, having an assessment done on this piece of property, and it was taking longer than we anticipated. Is this numbered here, the result that came from that assessment?
We, we've had a few assessments that have been done, appraisals done over the years. This is a blended number of those different appraisals.
Of all those.
We had a lack of confidence in the last appraisal that was done.
I know there was issues with the last appraisal, that's why I was asking.
Any questions of Council? What are you doing?
Trying to get my butt...
Thank you, Mr. Meisner.
There it goes. This does, this particular purchase agreement does not include any provisions of leasing parking spaces in that other lot? Or does it?
It does not, that I'm aware of, no.
Mr. Attorney?
No.
And this, this agreement is an attorney-written agreement, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of Council? Ms. Turner.
We do still have an existing agreement for parking sharing, though, don't we?
And I guess that would be a question for a city attorney, what happens with the existing agreement after?
Actually, I don't think the agreement was ever signed.
Didn't expire or something like that?
It did expire, and they never brought it back to us.
I guess that's what I'm asking. I don't know.
They had the right to renew, and they did provide those...
Oh, they did.
Yes, that's what I thought, that they had...
All right.
It was a one-sided renewal in the former agreements. It was up to them to let us know that they wanted to renew.
Okay.
Any questions of Council?
So I guess the answer is, they do still have an agreement to use part of the parking, then, that's in the public lot.
Yeah, there's nothing in this purchase and sale agreement that addresses the parking.
I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 13, Series of 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second, any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. I would like to move on to 14? 13? Which one am I at?
13.
13. It's a consideration municipal code update, Ordinance Number 11, Series 2019, for second reading and adoption by title only, entitled, "An Ordinance for the City of Canyon City, Colorado Vacating a Portion of Cone Avenue Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado." Would you care to give us a report, Mr. Acting Administrator?
Actually, we've got Adam still here. Adam, would you mind coming up, please?
Yeah, the only thing I would have to report is nothing's changed on this, since this is a second reading, other than the Smiths have signed all the documents that are required and have paid this year's taxes, the prohibited tax amount for the property.
Any questions of Council? We thank the Smiths for sitting through a long and interesting evening. So, I tried, I tried. All right, then I would ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve Ordinance 1119, Vacation of Cone Avenue, on second reading.
Second.
Second, Ms. Turner, thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your patience. Good luck with your project. All right.
Congratulations.
Yes. And number 14, consideration municipal code update, Ordinance Number 12, Series 2019, for second reading and adoption by title only, entitled, "An Ordinance Repealing Chapter 1.18 of Title I, Administrative Enforcement, Repealing and Reenacting Certain Chapters of Title VIII Concerning Annuances and Nuisances and Abatement." Amending Sections 9.56.015 and 9.56.030 concerning firearms, amending Title IX by relocating Chapter 8.12, Smoking in Public Places, to a new Chapter 9.23. Relocating Chapter 8.48, Fireworks, to a new Chapter 9.58, and relocating Chapter 8.5, Open Burning, to a new Chapter 9.6. Amending Title 15 by relocating Chapter 8.60, Fire Protection and EMS Impact Fee, to a new Chapter 15.42, and repealing Chapter 15.32, Moving Buildings, amending the code by the relocating and amending Chapter 12.16, Sidewalk and Gutter Maintenance, Chapter 8.70, Stormwater, Illicit Discharges and Permit Requirements in Chapter 8.80, Flood Plane Management Regulations, to Titles 19, 20, and 21, and making other major amendments to ensure conformity with this ordinance. Would you care to comment, our Acting Administrator?
Actually, Mr. Hoffman will be taking this item...
Mr. Hoffman, would you care to?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. This ordinance is presented on second reading with the three changes that you asked for at the last meeting, and those are, as it relates to the prohibition on boarding up windows, it would only apply to non-residential buildings. Similarly, the definition of lawn furniture was amended to include and patio furniture. And last but not least, the definition of material safety data sheet, or MSDS, was tightened up a bit. And those are the three changes, otherwise it is presented as it was on first reading.
Okay. Any questions of our attorney? If not, I would like to ask Ron, Mr. Ron Kimmel, to come forward. He has a prayer statement on Title 8.18E, and we'll set the clock. Thank you, Ron, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the Council. We have watched with considerable interest at, as the many meetings that referred to us personally and our building on Fourth and Main. All things considered, I would like to strongly suggest the Council reconsider adopting Title 8.18, especially Item E, as this code was clearly crafted to target us. I am not here tonight to debate or argue the issues. I am here to restate our position and correct some misinformation that has been passed along before you make this decision final. Everything we have asserted in the past and put forward tonight is factually based and verifiable, unlike some of the information you have been presented with. A brief history, as you well know, but for the public record, we rescued this building in 2007, the infamous four corners. It was a hotbed of drugs, theft rings, gang activities, homeless hangouts, vandalism, and crime in general. This building is also surrounded by five bars. Mix in some alcohol and hormones, and you can amplify the problems threefold. And this building was at the hub of those activities. Despite all of that, we invested our retirement savings and bought this building anyway. The first order of business was to evict undesirables, clean up the building, and safeguard it from the criminal elements that thrived in this area. The security and safety issues were given top priority then, and the same is true today. We have restated that many times only to have it dismissed or merely glossed over. It was the first point we stressed in our meeting with some of you in February 2018. Transforming that building took a lot of time and money. After tackling the major problems, we started work on the smaller projects, such as the ground level apartment in April of 2012. Fact. It wasn't against the codes when we did this, and I think Mayor Troutman knows this, as it is our understanding, he was serving on the Planning Commission at the time they changed the code allowing above apartments only in the Central Business District in December of 2012, nine months after we built this apartment. Fact. Five years later, City Councilman Schumacher took exception to our tenant residing on the Ground 4 apartment. She shared her complaints with Ms. Bernath, who in turn found a solution by providing her the current code and not allowing Ground 4 apartments. Fact. Councilman Schumacher made her personal political agenda against us very clear when she threatened us with a gun and stated to the police, "I am in the process of gaining control of this building. I am a councilwoman," and hands the police officer her City Council business card. That distinctly shows the agenda. I don't know how much more obvious that could get than that. You certainly cannot deny the events that followed stemmed from this various, this vicious political attack against us. Fact. You have, when you would not hear our pleas to help when we could not meet the date set forth to evict our tenant, we made the decision to board up our building for the following reasons: to safeguard our building, our tenants, and the community; number two, the difficulties with competing with, against the high longstanding downtown vacancy rates; number three, the lower rent rates you get for commercial spaces versus residential; number four, the many threats made, already made against, by the city to board up St. Skalasko citing safety concerns due to its vacancy; number five, the political agenda being waged against us. The only logical choice was to disengage and board up the building. Fact. Immediately after boarding up, Ms. Bernath contacted Fire Chief Del Vecchio, requesting them to check our building for any code violations. An inspection was conducted, and the report of the, of the fire inspector's findings were submitted to Ms. Bernath. Following and citing the internal fire codes, he concluded we were not violating IFC standards. In summary, I quote from his report, "The code does allow and even suggest boarding up as a way of securing vacant occupancy." This is contrary to what you have been told in previous meetings about the fire department's concern for public safety issue. Secondly, this very same report, in its entirety, was given to those we met, who met with us last February. Thirdly, the fire department's position has not changed when we spoke to the fire inspector last week. This information was put forth, and I would be so bold to say intentionally mislead you. Someone isn't telling it straight here. Now, this is... Now, this is interesting. In October two thousand and eight, the city adopted Resolution number twenty-seven, series two thousand and eight, to follow the IFC safety standards signed by Mayor Jacquez. By passing this code Title eight point one eight with item E, will be in direct conflict with that revolution, resolution and the IFC codes. Based on Mr. Ms. Bernath's complaint, we asked for a detailed, in-depth inspection of our entire building. The fire inspector set, found that we were exceeding their minimum standard codes in many areas. Fact. In light of your repeated concerns about our building's safety, Sheila recently called Police Chief Harvey, but only got through to his voicemail. She left a message inviting him to inspect our building to address any concerns the police department might have. He did not return the call, so we can only assume that there were none. That would not be surprising because we have been the police department's poster child in helping them with this high-risk area of downtown since the day we bought this building. Of late, however, the police department had let us down in helping us protect our tenants and property, and we find this very disappointing. Fact, we, you indeed received a petition and a few letters from the downtown merchants, merchants association. However, no mention was made of the twenty-one-plus letters the city received, or the forty-plus business people that attended the BOA meeting to support us. The merchants' petition was also misleading in that two people who signed the petition later came to us and said they'd signed it under totally different pretenses, being led to believe it was aimed at getting the city to cooperate with us. There are eighty businesses downtown. The merchants' associations does not represent the majority on this issue. Most of the business owners are eager to shake our hand and encourage us to stay strong with our struggles with the city, often adding, "We can't afford to speak out in fear of retaliation from the city," and that's a sad commentary. But if it comes down to the, to, down to the numbers you want, we can certainly fill this room again and flood you with more letters if that's your pleasure. Fact, we have had no conversations with any of the members of merchants' association to discuss this issue, so that was totally untrue. Fact, we heard your complaints about the boards being uglies. When the complaint was raised in our meeting with some of you last February, we offered to paint them. The response we got was it was not so much the boards that were the problem, but what we put on them. Another comment was it didn't project a positive image of the city. In your most recent meeting, the subject of aesthetics continued, so we decided to go ahead and paint them. We picked a very neutral color that blends with our stucco. We painted them a month ago. Current status, this apartment is not under any active rehabilitation or construction permit. It isn't vacant due to fire, flood, or earthquakes as outlined in item E. It is a fully reconditioned functional apartment that you will not allow us to rent. The apartment remains vacant due to your choice, not ours. We did one time offer a modest compromise that we shared with a couple of council members. It is our understanding that was shared with Mr. Rourke, who flatly rejected it. Since that time, we have reconsidered any such possibilities due to our lack of trust in the city. After all, back in two thousand and twelve, what happened five years later? We would be foolish to invest any more money or time into something that could be annulled at the drop of a dime, such as you did back then. Our position, it has not changed. We will continue to safeguard our residents, the community, and our property. The personal attacks we have been subjected to in the past and present only strengthens our resolve to stand up for what is right. Our strength is firmly grounded by our constitutional rights and further guides us to what is morally and ethically right. In conclusion, we can, we maintain a vicious political tender started with former councilman Schumacher and was supported by a strong-minded city administrator. Voting in favor of this position of the title will only validate that agenda. Is that truly what you want? Before you vote, you might weigh your risks and your reputation. Just because you decide to vote something into a code regulations, doesn't necessarily make it legal, let alone make it right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Okay, we have read the, would you have any further comment from the Acting Administrator? Any discussion from council? Mr. Meisner?
Corey, are you, are you aware of the claim that that lower level at one point was allowed as a residence?
I, I don't know. I mean, I, zoning can certainly change, and it may have been illegal, not become illegal, non-conforming use that, I just don't know.
If it had been a conforming use before the change, would have it been grandfathered?
As long as it went uninterrupted, it could have been. But I, again, I don't, I don't know the facts well enough to speak to it.
Has anybody ever else heard of that statement?
Um, I guess there's two things, and maybe Kimmel's you can answer. Did you ever actually get a certificate of occupancy for the residential apartment? An actual certificate of occupancy?
It was not required.
We didn't have to give a building permit because we did nothing, struck so it was all paint and that kind of thing.
It's all cosmetic.
And I asked Greg at the building department when we did this about this, and he said, and he even took me to the zoning lady, and she didn't see anything wrong with it. That's why we did it. I don't ever do anything in this city without asking first.
So, I do know that your arguments were taken to the municipal court. The judge heard your arguments.
We understand that.
And the ruling did not, was not in your favor.
That's correct.
That is correct, and we acknowledge that. They ruled on the fact that Mr. York has the right as administrator, as he sees fit, to enforce the new code. He doesn't want to acknowledge prior code. We know that. He didn't have to, but he could have, but he didn't have to, and that's the law.
We asked for that option and we'll flatly refuse.
Mr. Mayor, there's just a couple, just point, you know, just little things I want to point out, and that is that Kathy Schumacher is not sitting at this diocese. She is not here.
Her seat.
And she did not vote on this ordinance. Neither City Administrator Tonya Rourke is sitting on this diocese at this time. And at no time ever, I think, would any city council member ever say that you did not have a right to put whatever content you wanted on your building. You have a First Amendment right to say what you want, and I would never, ever even come close to insinuating you taking that away.
We didn't come here to argue, so, you know, we hear you, what you're saying, but we didn't come here to argue. We came here to state the case, and we have the backs and every scrap of paper to back up everything we said. So, it's all documented.
The thing that we have a problem with is it's been directed directly at us. This ordinance is directed directly at us.
So, um, and just one more comment. We, you have made considerable investments in your building, and I really want to sincerely thank you for that and for what you have done.
Thank you.
Um, we have also made considerable investments in the downtown to beautify it and make it more appealing for developers, and we have been told by a lot of folks who are investing in downtown, who are also fixing up historical buildings at considerable, at great cost, that those investments and enhancements and the beautification of the downtown is a part of their willingness to invest their dollars into our city. And the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that the beauty and the enhancement, no matter which building it could be, anywhere on Main Street, that, that aesthetic standard is maintained for future growth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. We did paint them in consideration of that, and I also want to repeat, we're not talking about the majority here and the prevailing majority opinion. But then I want to get away from arguing it and stuff. We just wanted to state our position, and that's, if you have a question I can answer for you, we're more than happy to.
Well, thank you for coming here to state your position, and I hope you feel that it was respectfully heard, and that we value you and, and the investments that you made and the, the cleaning up of that corner that you did. Thank you for being a part of our downtown.
You're welcome. Any other questions you might have for us?
Ms. Cochran?
So, I'm.
New?
New.
Very.
Feeling a little uninformed and kind of caught in the middle here.
Lot of history.
So, is it, is current code what is keeping you guys from moving forward with your building? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So, to resolve this issue, to remove the boards and for you to start using that building again, you're saying that the code would have to be changed to allow for first-floor residences? Or is there another option that you can do with that space? I mean, I'm trying to understand if it's just you guys standing strong in your opinion, or if there is a solution to this, or?
Look, let me put it this way. The, when the code's changed, we realized things going forward would change with that. However, we had that apartment, and it wasn't against code when we did this, and it was there for five years and stuff. We, what we really wanted to do out of this whole thing, that's seven feet, seven feet.
That's, that's the frontage on this space, this commercial space downtown.
Is, is, there was a best use when we did that five years prior to all this and stuff. We wanted to be restored to whole. And the thing is, I know the administrator had the power. He proved it. We're not debating that, but the thing is that hurt us the most, the very most. So, there were other things the city could have done, other routes and avenues they could have done back then, such as grandfathering it, and a couple of other routes to make this right with us. It wasn't given a single consideration at all.
And so, you know, I, I can sympathize with your frustration, but I guess where I'm coming from is, you know, a lot of the staff that you're naming and, and council people that you're naming are no longer here, so I feel like we're at an impasse at this point.
No, what you're doing is carrying it forward, you know, because this is targeted at us.
Specifically.
And so, we, you know, just go, that's why we're here.
And I guess what I'm not understanding is from an investment standpoint, is why a property owner would rather let a building sit vacant to prove a point than to make money off of it, is what I'm not understanding.
That's the whole point of why we turned it into an apartment.
Was to make money.
To make money. It's seven feet.
It's a commercial space. It's seven feet wide in the front. That's it.
That's it, and you have no visibility. As far as the commercial application, there was, you might as well try to win the lottery and stuff and have anything long sustaining there. And the best option was what they did years ago, and when they had this apartment, that made the best use and most logical use of making that a revenue generating source for them. Because it's small, it's, all you have is one twenty-eight inch window and one store door. That's all you have. So, there was some wisdom in that and stuff, but it fell in disrepair decay and not usable, so that's when we came to, when we had the time and the money to evaluate what was the best direction to take with it. And that's when we approached the, the thing with the rehabbing the apartment because it made the most sense.
So, what is your solution moving forward?
You guys have all the power.
No chance of reneging it. We've had it since two thousand and seven, and we.
Well, I haven't. I'm just clarifying. There's a lot of new staff and a lot of new council people, so.
Maybe you need to look at the guidance of your peers. They have a lot of history there and probably be able to. I provided our information to Cindy and stuff. She, you can maybe reread that and try to absorb it and stuff, and it's far more complicated than what's just what we stated here. But like I said, we didn't come here to fight with you. We just wanted to make it clear where our position is.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Corey, I think there might be a question if there, I, I'm not sure that the code ever allowed residential apartments on the ground level. Just, just a statement there. I'm not sure if that ever was allowed. But I, I would say that Ryan Stevens did meet with you. I was with them. He offered to send commercial businesses your way that needed smaller areas, and from what I understand, those, they were all turned away.
That's not true. That's not true.
That is not true.
That's actually, actually the newest one, Suggestic Web Design is, is one of the folks I sent to the Kimmels.
But it was not that department.
And I also came to you asking if we could find a, a solution that could work, that would be, because we, I don't think council is under feeling that creating residential apartments on Main Street on the ground level is in the best interest of, of our, of our downtown district. However, I did come and say, would you find it amenable if we could create where the front of your store is for commercial, but the back of your building, of your apartment could still be used for residential apartment, and you weren't interested in pursuing that conversation any farther? That is still something I personally am interested in doing and maintaining.
It still would be legal under your present codes, though.
Well, no. It would be a code change. We could change the code to accommodate that, so that we could. So, I just want to, I don't necessarily need comment back, but just that we have been trying, we have been reaching out, trying to find a way to have mutually beneficial solutions of your own free will and choice, or ways that we can make it not just for you, but for everybody better. And the change in this Title Eight code is not directed at you specifically. It is for the enhancement of the entire downtown. We don't want anybody in the downtown corridor to put plywood on their windows.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you.
I have two things.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Ashley, just, I just want to reiterate what Ashley just said. Just to be clear, this ordinance would not be directed towards you at all, and I stand firmly on that.
Okay.
Um, it is directed to every business owner in our district. We don't want to see boarded up windows, doors on our downtown anywhere. So, I understand that you have a stance to make and you have a point to make. I understand. We sat for hours and we talked about it, but at some point, this has got to end.
Okay, number one, and I'm not going to argue any further. Go back to your meeting on May, on March sixth for the first forty minutes, where you spent entirely just on us and our boards and.
It may have been an, Ms. Kimmel, it may have been an example, and that's how a lot of, excuse me, that's how a lot of ordinances get started, is by using an example in their community.
Well, thank you.
So, all I'm saying is we've got to try to find a means to an end to this, okay? Or this could keep going on forever.
We're not here.
Mr. Meisner?
I think we're digressing.
Yes.
I do, too.
The intent of this discussion was the issues relative to Title Eight, and unquestionably, Title Eight has an impact on the boards that are on Main Street, and we knew that when we started. We need to get back to the point. Are we going to approve Title Eight? If we want to later try to resolve the situation that's existed for a long time on Main Street, let's do that. But tonight, let's talk about Title Eight, whether we are or are not going to support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacquez?
Mayor, members of council, I make the motion that we pass ordinance twelve, series two thousand and nineteen, on second reading.
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion on that motion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Corey, can you kind of highlight, I mean, Meisner brought up that this is actually a Title Eight revamp. It hasn't been kind of fixed for gazillions of years. We're looking at a huge celebration of our anniversary. It's time to kind of clean up the title. It has so much more to do than just the subject that was broached before. Can you kind of give us a highlight of?
That is correct.
A big picture of this Title Eight revision?
Yes, the big picture of this Title Eight revision is to put the city's entire kind of code enforcement nuisance abatement, all of its process into one consistent place. There were a number of locations under the municipal code, some which could be construed as being conflicting, that had been developed over the years, and this is to make one comprehensive, integrated code to address it.
Ms. Cochran, you had a.
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, you're going to make a motion, okay. Any more discussion on that motion? Here we go. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick.
Aye.
Councilmember Haques.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you all. Let's move on to number fifteen. It's consideration adoption by title only of Resolution thirteen, series two thousand and nineteen, entitled, "Resolution Appointing Ryan Stevens as Acting City Administrator of the City of Canyon City, Colorado." And could we do? And could we, would we refer that to our attorney or to Mr. Stevens?
I'm happy to take this, and I hope the resolution is self-explanatory. It is simply appointing Mr. Stevens as your acting city administrator.
Okay. Any questions, council? Mr. Meisner, you're hesitating.
I'm waiting for Dalia Rida. Move forward.
What?
Go ahead, Mr. Meisner.
Would someone make a motion?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we, I'm looking for the verbiage. I lost my paper.
13.
I lost my paper.
Resolution 13.
I make a motion... For the consideration and adoption by title only of Resolution 13, Series 2019, entitled "A Resolution Appointing Ryan Stevens as Acting City Administrator of the City of Canyon City."
Motion's been made. I have a second. Mr. Meisner, a second, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing?
I just have a tiny, sorry. I had a citizen come in. I just want to do a clarification of saying that, you know, what's up with, you know, Ryan taking over this interim position, and I just want to make sure that the citizens know that when we asked Ryan to ask, as our interim administrator, that that was something he had to think very carefully about and go to his family and talk about, to take on this position, and we really appreciate him taking the implications of this responsibility and that transition period seriously and out of your loyalty to the city and for just kind of stability in the transition that you're willing to take on this, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number 16, consideration and adoption by title only of Resolution 14, Series 2019, entitled "A Resolution Approving the Resignation Agreement with Anthony H. O'Rourke." Would the attorney please comment on that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This resignation is presented to you this evening. It is consistent with Mr. O'Rourke's employment agreement. It is consistent with when there is a, well, I'll use the term separation, not for cause. This is what is contemplated by his employment agreement, and so it is presented for your approval tonight.
Thank you. Any discussions from council? Hearing and seeing, none? Could I have a motion? Do you have a, what?
I'll give you a motion.
A motion?
Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve Resolution 14, Series of 2019, "A Resolution Approving the Resignation Agreement of Anthony H. O'Rourke."
Second.
May in second? Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that this resignation agreement with Tony O'Rourke is based, as the attorney said, on the language from his contract, and these letters and his contract are both found on the website and is available and open to the public to review for themselves, and it speaks for the position of the council.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Meisner? Was that the motion?
I just would like to thank Tony for his years of service, the things that he did positively for the city and for his friendship.
Any discussion on the motion? No? Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacquez?
And for my own personal reasons, no.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do we have an administrator, acting administrator's report at this time?
No report at this time.
Okay.
You're disappointed.
That has been a long meeting. I think we would like to, I would like to, Mr. Horn and people from the Rec District, it sounds like we're in favor. We just need to know some more particulars. We would invite you to come to hopefully a vision committee meeting, which is sort of an open discussion, and let's get more involved in that discussion, okay? And we can get you on, you can talk to myself or Cindy, and we'll get you on the next, as soon as we can, okay? Then we stand adjourned.